Call this meeting to order. I'm gonna ask that Joe Hadley lead us in a word of prayer, and when he's finished, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Williams to lead us in the.
Let us pray. Dear heaven and Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every blessing you send us every day. Forgive us of our sins, oh Lord, and just be with each and everyone that's here as they leave tonight. Be with everyone over the Thanksgiving holiday, and bless them, bless their food, bless each and every one that eats that Thanksgiving dinner, and keep them all safe. Ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams and Commissioner Hadley. I will now at this time call a meeting to order, and ask for a resolu-- have everybody read the agenda, and asked for a resolution for the agenda, approval of agenda?
I'm gonna remove the--
With any deletions or--
Yeah, I'm gonna remove the grant writer from my section.
Okay, we're gonna remove the grant writer from Commissioner Williams' section. Anybody else? Deletions or additions?
Delete the IDA nominations.
We're gonna delete the IDA nominations under the commission reports, I mean staff reports, anything else. So we got a resolution to amend the agenda and delete under Mr. Williams and Ms. Sylvia. Do we have a second?
Do we get a motion?
You got a-- did you do that in a motion?
No, I mean we've approved the agendas of ended.
Alright, I got a motion and a second. Sorry, guys. Any discussion, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None, motion carries. Alright, coming down to the approval of the minutes on November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, November ninth, excuse me. Can I get a resolution?
I mean we approve the minutes of November ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Got a motion, got a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a resolution for the minutes for a special call meeting that was dated November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None, motion carries. Can I have a resolution that we approved the claims for two thousand, uh, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one?
I'll move the motion, we pay the bill.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None, motion carries. Uh, just for the record, Ms. Sylvia, I forgot to tell you, could you make a note that we have, do have a quorum, and every commissioner is present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sorry about that. Alright, we come down to public comments. Mr. Willie Campbell, is he in the room? I don't see Mr. Willie, so we'll move on. Do we have a Ms. Kittle? Can you approach the mic here? How you doing, Ms. Kittle? What can we do for you today?
Okay, I own some property at three oh one County Road, two oh one. Alright, uh, I had put some fence posts in down the road. It was even with my, on the right side of my driveway, it was even. And I put new poles on the ground. Well, they're working on the road, so nobody told me anything. And I come by, after about four, five days, and my fence post been pulled up and goaded into ditch. And I paid two hundred dollars to have a fence post put in. And, uh, I talked to Mr. Randall, he told me to come down here.
Okay.
And, um, see how we can resolve the situation.
Right, so I was made aware of this today. Uh, you do are aware we're paving that road, right?
Right.
Okay, so we're preparing to pave that road. And the reason they moved the fence post, because them fence posts are actually on county right-of-way. The, they on this side of the ditch. Don't you have a ditch there?
They dug the ditch after they pulled my poles up.
But the county has so much right-of-way from the center of the road to a ditch, the ditch line.
Alright, well, on this side, from the man across the street to this corner pole, twenty-nine feet. So I come off of that fence, twenty-nine feet, and these two were even.
So you come from the center of the road, twenty-nine foot?
I come from the, uh, across the man's road, the fence that's crossing from me.
Yeah, but that ain't, that ain't the way it works, though, if I ain't mistaken, I'll, I'll get it.
But I mean, my other fence was right there, it's the same amount of house.
On this side of the road, your roads right here, the fence, you talking about that fence right there? It's, it's got to be moved too. It needs to be moved back also. All that is on the county right-of-way. Right, all that is, is on the county right-of-way. If you look at your deed on your property, you'll see, and sometimes the deed don't include the county right-of-way. Mr. Tony, do you know what the right-of-way is on that road?
It's prescriptive, it's back of the ditch, the back of the ditch.
Uh, well, I, three or four years ago, uh, it was, you know, before Shelby County gave it to Chilton County, there was no right-of-way on that road.
Well, they're all road--
It had a easement.
Yes, ma'am, but I, I can't speak for Shelby County, but I do know that all roads have right-of-ways, so the county has a right-of-way.
Okay, from the middle of the road to, how much you got?
How much is the right-of-way from the middle of the road to, did you know that off the top of your head? We can check on that. It's to the back of the ditch, but we will check on that, but what I'm saying is, is that fence, even the fence that's not been moved, needs to be moved to the back of the ditch. I'll get our county engineer to go out there and mark--
I don't wanna talk to Tony, 'cause Tony told Mr. Randall that he told me I couldn't put it up, and he didn't tell me nothing.
Ma'am, let me, let me say something, ma'am. I did talk to Tony again. I could've misunderstood him about him telling you--
He didn't tell me.
So forth and so, 'cause I think he did correct me on that and say that, no, he did not tell you.
Okay.
He was just going, but let me ask you a question, can I?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
How long has your existing fence been there?
It's been there a few years, but the original fence was out where I had just put them poles. 'Cause there's a telephone pole down on the end, and it used to be inside my pasture. Then you got that, yeah, by the, right past the cover. And they won't never clean the cover out, and they dig the ditch, and then they push all the gravel back in there, and then once it rains, and I lose sixteen acres.
Well, let's just do this. I, I think that we need to, and I'm gonna get some direction from my attorney. Uh, I will meet with the engineer, let's go out there and look at, see what the guidelines is, Mr. Tony, and make sure we correct on this on both sides, okay, before we do anything?
Okay, because, you know, if I had to move mine, how come the man across the road don't have to move his?
Well, he may--
He may be far enough off the right-of-way, is what I'm saying. But, but, but I can't say that, 'cause I haven't seen it, to be honest with you. Can you give me time to look at it? I'll meet with Tony. We'll go look at it, and we'll see what the discuss, what the, and we will contact you, and give you, uh, we'll meet with you if we need to up there, and kinda go over this, see if we can solve this the right way, okay? 'Cause, I mean, we do have, the county does have a right-of-way on that road. Now, if they didn't, we couldn't pave it, and, and just to be honest with you, I'm glad to see it being paved. It's a dirt road.
I know, because they already do about eighty or ninety now.
Well, Lord, I know, I understand, but that was a grant, let me tell you something. There's a lot of people in this county would love to have that dirt road money, I can guarantee you, but we chose that because the amount of people, it was such a, there was stipulations in the grant, the amount of people had to be on that road, had to be a rural part of the county, and there was two roads we chose up there, but if you would give me time, I give you my word that we will get with Tony and, and Matt, and we'll go up there and we'll check it out, we'll be sure to, whatever we decide to do, uh, we will take care of it the right way.
Okay, you have it in black and white, the, uh, the easement?
Do I have it in black and white?
Where I can sit and read it?
The, you talking about the right-of-way? I'm sure--
From the middle of the road to the-- Like from the middle of my road to my fence, you telling me I gotta move from the middle of the road to his fence?
Each road, I, I tell you what we'll do, I will get Roger, Roger?
It, it's a prescriptive easement, which means it's not that it's surveyed out.
Uh-huh.
It means that that road was there a long, long time ago.
Uh-huh.
And whatever that road bed and the right-of-way that had been being maintained before that time, prescriptively, meaning by operation of law and time,
uh-huh.
became a county road when it was dedicated to the county.
Uh-huh.
So there's not gonna be a meets and bounds description for that.
Uh-huh.
Ordinarily, it'd be a minimum of thirty feet for a prescriptive easement. I've not been out there, so I don't know
That means from the--
what the situation is, but that would be fifteen feet from the center line of the road in each direction at a minimum. But if it's been established that the prescription is beyond that, because of the landmarks and the ditches that have been put in, then the prescriptive easement applies to whatever
Is on that road.
roadway it was used for that.
See, they used to be, before they took that cover down, there was concrete bridges.
Okay, but I don't know anything about all those.
Well, and that's where--
Those facts, so you can't try your case in here about all that.
But I'm, yeah.
Okay, so that doesn't get us anything we, we can deal with.
Well--
But, you know, like I said, I paid to put them pole, the forty-nine poles, and then they just throw them in the ditch, you know, so I'm out of forty-nine poles.
I, I don't think that you're out of forty-nine poles, 'cause they laid them on your property, is that correct?
They throw them outside the road.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
Uh, how long have you owned that property?
Oh, my daddy owned it.
Was there a fence, you say you put this fence up on both sides of your driveway?
Yes, but the original fence went to where I just put that one.
So you put the fence back exactly where it was, okay, I just wanna make sure I understood about the fence, that's all.
And that's why I put it even with the one I got on this side of my driveway coming down this way.
Only thing we do is what Chairman just said, in my opinion.
And we'll just have to look at it and see what we need to do to solve it.
I mean, I can, I can meet you out there, or I can get my son to meet you out there.
Well, there won't be tomorrow, I can assure you. I, I've got, I've got a funeral tomorrow, that I gotta proceed, so I, I, it was probably gonna be next week after this holiday, 'cause we have one more day before the holidays. Uh, so, and then I will contact you. Did you, you, I'm, when you fill that sheet out, did you give her your information, your contact information, Ms. Sylvia? Does she have your contact information?
No, I'm, nobody took it.
Okay, was it on that sheet?
Well, she gave me a phone--
Will you give Ms. Sylvia a good--
You don't need to do it in an open meeting.
No, just meet with her, and just give her your phone number, please.
Okay, and we'll see how we resolve it?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Alright, thank you for your time. Thank you, Judge.
Somebody need?
Yes, ma'am, we'll give you a call and make it arrange the time, it's good for, uh, while I get with Tony, and we'll meet you out there, see what we need to do. Or Mr. Matt, either one, so.
And I didn't have attorney there?
Uh, well, if you, listen, if you wanna bring your attorney, that's fine, but if you wanna bring attorney, let me know, and I'll just bring mine too, if we need to.
Well, I mean, you know, I wanna--
Well, I'm, I'm asking you, if you wanna, if you're gonna contact--
Well, I'm just saying that, from a middle, you know, if I had to have a big mind, another man should have--
Well, listen, this is what I'm telling you. If you wanna bring your attorney involved this, then have your contact, attorney contact ours. Now, if you want me to work on this, I will. But if you wanna go ahead and get your attorney involved, I need to know that now.
No, I wanna flip with him.
Okay, that's what I was gonna make sure, thank you. Yes, well-- Again, I'm, I'm gonna say, if he want, if you want him there, please let me know, and I'll be sure I have mine there, okay? Ours there, okay? I mean, I think we can resolve this without attorneys, but if we need to, that'd be fine. I would hope so too, because, I mean, anytime somebody misses an attorney, I get a red flag right there, go, whoa! You know what I mean? 'Cause that, that, that never does help the situation, but ever. Okay, we will resolve it, just give us time to, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Moving right along? Ms. Kittle? I said, I pronounced your name wrong, I said, I'm sorry, Ms. Kittle, Ms. Kittle. Alright, staff reports, Ms. Sylvia Singleton, our administrator.
Uh, this will be the second meeting for library nominations. Uh, we have Ms. Ann Glenn nominated currently.
So we have any more nominations? So we'll continue this for one more week, and then we'll--
Meeting.
One more meeting, I'm sorry, and then we will, uh, close nominations next meeting and vote on it. Alright?
I'd like to request a resolution to close the courthouse parking lot on the west side for Kissel Entertainment for a half-day on twelve-two-twenty-one, and a whole day on twelve-three-twenty-one for, uh, Christmas parade and tree lighting, and I've already talked to, uh, the Revenue Commissioner's office about their parking, and, uh, they are aware of this.
We need to include the bathroom access in this?
I wasn't asked about that, I was just asked about the parking lot.
We did it last year, that's the only reason I was asking, we did it last year.
We, we do, 'cause usually Joe's church is here serving hot chocolate, is that right, Joe, and hot dogs or something? Let's go ahead and add that, that resolution if we can.
I move a grant request to close the courthouse parking lot, twelve-two and twelve-three, half-day on twelve-two, and all-day twelve-three for Kissel Entertainment to set up for the Christmas parade and tree lighting, and have access to the courthouse bathrooms.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, that's on a Thursday, Friday, I guess we'll--
The Thursday, it'll be Thursday after lunch, basically.
But Friday is where we do the bathroom.
And Friday is when they'll be--
She pretty much said when she talked, Theresa told me the other day, they probably not gonna need it Thursday afternoon, 'cause they thought they'd come in here and set up after--
The courthouse still on that thing?
Mm-hmm.
He's talking about the parking lot.
Yeah, they provide parking on the other side of the building for them.
And we usually, John usually puts somebody to man that door for that few hours, after-hours. I will get with him on that and make sure we get that clear. Uh, but they're gonna have the half-a-day, they're not gonna park there that half-a-day, ten and a half on that side, Joe? Uh, that, is that what you were talking about, or, or the security?
We have parking in general, please.
Yeah, well, they're, they're-- Well, they got, they have to set up that day for the, their enter, whatever, entertain the kids or whatever, so.
I don't think we had any issues last year, I don't remember hearing--
The only issue we had last year was they came early. Then they wound up setting up like Wednesday night, and they were there two full days the other day.
Yeah, they'll be here half-day on Thursday and all-day on Friday, is that right?
Yep.
Does, not, does, does rest of the people up set up like in the lane, in the parking lanes?
No, it's just the rides, the Kissel rides.
Ride, the Kissel--
Yeah, it's free entertainment.
No. Any further questions? Having none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Um, next, I'd like to request a resolution to approve, uh, the pay scale that was presented to you as lo, along with the job descriptions for the commission office.
I move a grant request to approve the pay scaling jobs description, descriptions for the commission office.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, just for your information, we had, um, the insurance, um, presentation last week. Um, gonna let you know that our, um, HR guy received a letter from, uh, LG Hip, and we have been changed to preferred status.
Yes.
So that means that, uh, our, even our, our individual insurance and our family insurance has been reduced. Not, not greatly, but, uh, the family has been reduced by a hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Yeah, excuse me, could you repeat that, a hundred and what?
One hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
That's, that's good for us, so.
Uh, so I, I thought, I thought that would be, and I, I also needed to know this legislative conference that's coming up, are y'all, any of you planning to attend? It will be the eighth and ninth.
It, the eighth and ninth of, of December?
Of December.
Yes, I'll get with you on that.
Okay, alright, um--
Yeah, Joseph and I will probably be on it, anybody else wants to go, maybe?
And I, I know I usually give you a revenue and expense report, but we are still closing the twenty-one year, so as soon as I get that information, I'll, um, get you a revenue and expense report for the twenty-one year.
Alright, Ms. Kittle, you can go ahead and, you mentioned that conference, do you wanna mention the NACO conference too in Washington? I know--
Yes, I mean, the NACO conferences, uh, you, you have more information on that.
Uh, the NACO conference is gonna be in, back on schedule in February in Washington. I, I am gonna be attending it. Just gonna make an offer to you guys, if you wanna go. There's a lot of good study that we can do up there, um, a lot of things that can be done, it's more of a nationwide. Uh, but we need to know, uh, for this commission, who needs to go. I've asked that our administrator and assistant administrator attend this. They have been arguing with me for two weeks now, and I'm on, I'd like for one of them to go, but they are penny-pinching with me right now, so I understand that, and I'm, I'm losing this battle by the day, so, but I'd like for at least one of them to, to be able to attend this also, 'cause there's some good information for us to be able to, um, bring back to Chilton County.
What was those dates?
It is February the twelfth through the sixteenth, it's in Washington DC.
Twelfth through the sixteenth.
And then, just as a matter of a little bit of information for you, um, of course, the airport authority turned in their twenty-twenty audit from, uh, Hull and Russell, and of course, there were no findings and no recommended changes to be made. Uh, but an interesting note, um, the audit determined the financial contribution to Chilton County from the acquisition of property, ad valorem taxes and other transactions came to seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Alright, that's good.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Alright, moving down to our litter agent, Ms. Lippy Ratliff.
Good, how are you, Ms. Lippy? I'm here to ask for a resolution to accept the resignation of Caleb Clains on the, the, November the twelfth.
So many--
Got a motion and a second? Matt, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Um, also, we wanted to get a resolution to be able to, um, advertise to hire and replace that lady.
Got a motion and a second, Darrell, was a motion, Mr. Williams was second. Any questions? I do. Uh, Ms. Libby, I know you're starting to go through this round of people like we have through other departments. Is it, 'cause they getting better jobs, or getting better pay, or anything like that?
The young man that left here, like, uh, LaHoyes?
Look, yeah, well, I mean, LaHoyes is a, they offer a lot of--
He makes eighteen dollars an hour there. I mean, litter is also stepping stomp of these guys.
What does our litter guys make per hour? Thirteen? Okay. Alright, call me tomorrow if you will, please. Thank you.
Do you have anything else for me tonight?
Thank you, thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much.
Alright, moving right down, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, can we get a vote on that? Can, alright, let me, let me back up. Can I get a resolution to request that her to advertise and replace?
We, we have a resolution in a second.
Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Those opposed? Motion carries. Guess I got sidetracked, yes. Hey, back, alright. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Uh, our EMA director, Mr. Dan, Derek Wright. Ooh, that was almost good. Careful, people watching. Can I get a resolution?
I make a resolution.
Resolution and a second.
I'll second that.
We have a, any further, any discussion?
You said last in the work session, Derek, that was in your budget.
All in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, any more discussion? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Derek, off the top of your head, do you know what portion of the years, years in Nick's salary is paid, uh, by the state?
Uh, Nick's a hundred percent paid. Nick is the CRI coordinator with ADPH base. They give us roughly thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, and part of that is his salary, so he is a hundred percent paid by the state. My part is about fifty percent of state requires, you pay me forty dollars plus, and then everything I pay is fifty percent reimbursed.
And so, you don't want--
You pay me, you pay about fifty percent of all our salary. We'll say thirty-three point three percent of us, our salaries is what you're about to--
Rest of it, state.
Rest of it is reimbursed.
But you don't have to have that approved, the seven percent for him through the state?
Whatever we--
It's just what amount, okay.
It's reimbursement.
Okay.
So what we do is Nick goes up there every month, pulls all of our files and stuff, hey, this is what our stuff is.
Right.
Claims reimbursement, that's why I changed his title to CRI coordinator, 'cause he's a hundred percent paid through public health.
Do you have something, Ms. Sylvia? Yes?
I'm just, I'm just curious about how long it takes to be reimbursed, if there's one that takes so long to reimburse?
Uh, public health is monthly, uh, stay by the boundary, and it's about a year behind. They want you to be on time, but if you're late, they're getting mad at you, but they're always about a year late.
Yes, so Derek, can you repeat that? I didn't have your mic on, you're, but you're requesting, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm requesting a resolution for a seven percent increase in pay for myself and Nick Bolton.
Okay, we, we, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the notion, let the record show that Mr. Hadley abstains from not being here. Thank you, Mr. Derek Wright. Alright, no old business, coming down, commission reports, uh, start with myself. I will, uh, refer to the, uh, our attorney, Roger Bates, on IT.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
As y'all know from our special meeting we had, we learned a lot about some things that we need to do to address some security concerns here, which are within the courthouse, there are obviously confidential matters that we don't need to have out in the public. But I do need to get a resolution from you to allow Ms. Sylvia and I to proceed with getting proposals to address those items that were included in the report shared with you.
Can I get a-- Okay, we got a res, got a resolution and a second. Got a motion and a second, any of other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I've got an amulet, somewhat of an amulet service update. Uh, we talked about Tuesday night, did the bids come back in? We only had, we accepted one bid on the, uh, accepted one contract on the, uh, bid on the nine-one-one board. The nine-one-one committee is going in negotiation with this one provider, and we'll have further updates hopefully in the near future. Hopefully, we can get something worked out on our, some kind of amulet service, uh, that's consistent and feasible to Chilton County. Okay, so that's all I have on that. I met with, uh, I've been meeting back and forth with the mayor and, um, the Jimmy Parnell, and somewhat with the IDA on the wetlands permits. They were expired on Friday, November the, uh, I mean, November nineteenth, on the five-hundred-and-twenty-four acres, twenty-three acres out there, one forty-five, known as the Alpha Project. We, uh, was asked by Mr. Parnell and Mr., and the mayor, that we had talked several times to, there was two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars that need to be paid to have a thirty-day extension. Uh, there was already a hundred-and-thirteen thousand some odd dollars that was paid for the permit. The whole permit is a million eight-hundred, I think it is, if I ain't mistaken. Uh, don't quote me on the numbers, but all this, this three-hundred, a million-- No, it's a million eight-hundred thousand. I, I could be wrong, I had, I had the contract, but I ain't, but you may be right, Commissioner Williams, but, uh, all this money that we paid toward this and the extension will go toward the, the balance of, of the, the whole amount, so we'll leave a balance of sixty-seven-hundred thousand dollars. They only give us a thirty-day, um, thirty-day, uh, extension on these wetlands. Uh, myself and Mr. Bates, and Mr., and the mayor, and several have got a meeting in the morning to discuss some working agreements. Uh, and some, uh, I was emailed a copy of some clawbacks that we were, we, that, uh, we need to look at about this extended. So the reason that I've asked for the night, our part is gonna be, Ms. Sylvia, did I give you that number? About third of two forty-seven was eighty-eight. Can you look at that? I'm sorry, that's my fault, I shouldn't have given you that number.
Have you got any attachment?
I, I'm sorry, I don't, but I can give it to you in just a few minutes. I, I'm sorry, I don't, but I can give it to you in just a few minutes. It was one of them things that, uh, it was eighty-two thousand three hundred and thirty-four dollars. Three hundred and thirty-four dollars, yeah. So eighty-two thousand two two three two three three, so eighty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. That is split three ways between the city, the county and Alpha. And at the third, at the end, if we can come to an agreement at the end of this thirty days, I'll come back to y'all, hopefully before the end of thirty days, come back to y'all and probably be asking for the remaining balance for us to pursue with these wetlands, because we have some things in the making, uh, that we're working with the city, uh, for future development out there, outside the Alpha, uh, with the Alpha, so. Uh, can't give you much update on the Alpha, as of now, we're still in negotiation of where we at and where we going, so I didn't want to jump ahead of myself and say, Mr. Williams and I, sir?
Did you say with or without?
With, with, no, I didn't say without, no, sir, with, with Alpha. Uh, that we're discussing with Alpha, with, with the city and us, we actually have a meeting at nine o'clock in the morning, and hopefully to get on the same page, we're on the same page, just get some details worked out between our attorneys and stuff. So, that's what I have, anybody have any questions? I need a resolution to approve, to spend this eighty-three thousand. Uh, and Ms. Sylvia says that she's already, I discussed where, where it could come out of.
Just, just for some clarity.
I need a, I need a, I need a resolution for discussion, if you want to, in a second for discussion.
I'll make a resolution.
Can I get a second for discussion?
I'll second it, so we can discuss it.
Okay.
So, just for some clarity, uh, it did not expire, the wetlands credits did not expire, they were going to expire on Friday, Alpha stepped in and Alpha paid that extension with the hopes that we would reimburse them, uh, a third and a third, and they would keep a third.
Correct.
Was the hope for that. Um, it, it is irrelevant, um, what goes out there, whether the farm center continues to push forward or anything that we might decide to put out there should, you know, whatever unfold. Those wetland, wetlands credits are viable for that piece of property, not necessarily for the project, so those credits are gonna be needed regardless of whether, no matter what goes there, it's just that important. Uh, these credits are only available for a very short amount of time, and these credits are waiting to be bought by somebody else, so if we choose to, to forego this and let these expire for any reason, even after this thirty days, somebody else is waiting in the wings to buy these credits, and if we go to buy them again later down the road for whatever we want to put, you know, or if Alpha, you know, continues to move forward, then the price is probably gonna double, so it is, it will behoove us to go ahead and move forward with this.
Whose name is on the credits? Thank you, Mr. Hom, thank you, Mr. Mills, I appreciate it. Oh, I'm sorry. It's IDAs and Alphas. I'm sorry, I missed. That's fine, it's IDA and Alpha.
Mm-hmm. Once we get these credits, how long are they good for?
Five years.
Five years, once the credits are, are bought, you have five years to develop.
And I was, and I, I know the mayor's aware of this, but I was gonna make sure everybody's aware of that too, is, that's a good question, Mr. Randall, thank you for asking.
So I have a question, this eighty-two, whatever, that is to reimburse Alpha?
Reimburse Alpha for the credits, yeah, they're our part. I, I couldn't tell them that we could do that, I told them I would bring it, they went ahead in good faith and paid the two forty-seven, uh, the mayor and Em met last night, agreed to pay the third of it, and so we could, we had our meeting tonight, didn't have, we couldn't call a special call meeting, it wasn't an emergency, uh, with a special call meeting, need to be five days, we couldn't do that, so that's why we had to bring it tonight, not rushing it, but I, I told Mr. Parnell very clearly, I would bring this to your attention, I, I was hopeful that this would pass, but I would not make a promise, I didn't have that authority.
Did we discuss this in the work session?
It, we did not, we did discuss the wetlands.
If you're gonna pass this, you gotta suspend rules.
I asked, yes, sir.
Is that not?
I would like to, uh, I thought we talked about this in the work session, but I, I could be wrong, so just in case, just in case, I'd like to record, I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules for the work session, uh, resolution to its, so we could move forward.
I move, suspend rules.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, can I get a resolution to pay our, reimburse Alpha our third of the wetland?
We don't got that resolution.
I'm sorry, for discussion, I'm, you're right.
You need to, you need to remove that.
Yeah, because we didn't, that's right.
Back up, so we need to redo it.
Yes, sir.
Make a resolution to pay the eighty-two, three, thirty-four, whatever that amount is exactly, once we get the one-third exactly, to pay that one-third, our portion.
Can I get a second? I got Alan, I got Matt, the first, Commissioner Mills, made a resolution, Commissioner Williams seconded, all in favor say aye.
Wait a minute, we want to see more discussion.
Any discussion?
After we pay this, our third, and just say the farm, the Alpha Center does flop, then Alpha's gonna come back, wanting us to pay their third for us to keep those wetland credits?
This is to my understanding, and don't hold me to this, and I'm, that whoever does not participate for, let me just back up for a minute. If we let these elapse, then we lose them, but.
Right, but what I'm asking.
But a third, but another party, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Uh, what, what will happen, the credit will have to be amended.
Yeah.
To include the city and the county as holders of the credit along with IDA.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think Alpha's name can be on those credits.
If they, if they chose to pull out.
It would be us, city and IDA.
Of the credit, wetland credits.
But if the farm center does flop, and Alpha pulls out, then is the county and the city gonna have to go back and pay Alpha their eighty-something thousand of this third for these wetland credits, or is Alpha just gonna lose that?
No, sir.
Just gonna lose it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go, I'm, without saying, guys.
Right.
Uh, I, I don't think we're gonna have to worry about that, we're gonna be discussing this in the next week.
Well, I'm.
And I understand what you're saying, but, no, Alpha would have to forfeit their, uh, their investment on these, because they started this, okay, they started, they had to forfeit their investment, and we had the option to continue on with amendments of the.
Okay.
Of that.
Just keep in mind, they've already paid one point three million dollars on the first round of this.
Right, yeah. Uh, so any further, I thought one hundred and thirteen thousand, yes, sir. Yeah, ten percent.
They're already out, a hundred and thirteen plus this.
We got, we was trying to get ninety days, but they wouldn't give it to us, because as Commissioner, uh, Mem said, there's other people really waiting on these wetlands, and guys, no matter what goes out there, I, I mean, this is, it's, we need the wetlands out there to move forward, no matter what, I don't care if we put a, if we put a swimming pool with, and build a building on it, we still need the wetlands out there, you know what I mean, so, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Abstain.
And I showed the record that, Commissioner Parnell abstains. All right, Commissioner Kelly.
Yes, sir, in the work session, we talked some about the litter, uh, problem in Chilton County, and I don't want to be so blunt to say, but I will go ahead and say it, we don't have a litter problem in Chilton County, we got a people problem. And I'm saying this because we live on radio and I hope the public is listening, I'm asking for the countywide people to help us to control this litter, and you people that are listening tonight on radio, just get out and ride roads that you're not accustomed to riding to, and, uh, you, you'll see what I'm talking about. It, it's a crying shame that people go down the road and throw a whole sack of Whataburger, Burger King, McDonald's, whatever, out the window. Uh, it's a crying shame that people pull up in people's place of business, the parking lots, and you go open up the next morning and there's, uh, six, eight, ten, twelve beer bottles, beer cans, and all these burger joint stuff laying at your gate of the place of business. Now, people, that's no respect at all. Let's go back to acting like human beings should, and that's respect each other and respect each other's property, and another thing, when you go out here and you see Ms. Libby, the great job she's doing picking up this litter, and you see all this litter on side of the roads, that's your tax dollars being spent that don't need to be. It's foolish for us to have to budget over a hundred thousand dollars a year to pick up somebody's garbage they throw out the window. And Ms. Libby has called me this week, we've talked, we're gonna get together and we're gonna, she's got some more ideas, uh, we asked the commission last work session, uh, you know, think of some more ideas, if, if there is any that we can come up with to try to, let's, let's, let's stop this litter, and, uh, let's make Chilton County a, a county that people's proud to come through from other states and other counties and say that that's a beautiful county. Thank you.
But I, if anybody had done, I'll add to that up, if you would, allow me to, Mr. Kelly.
Yes, sir.
That, um, you're right, it is a people problem, and what we don't understand, and I know she shared this with us, I'm gonna elaborate a little bit, is when you and us guys, or probably the worst of it, some, some girls, but I'll throw us guys under the bus, if you own a truck, and you just standing around drinking a drink, you throw that drink, that packet, I've done it, I'm guilty, in the back of your truck, I didn't bring it, I didn't know this, to Ms. Libby brought my attention, you throw it over the back of your truck, I'll throw it away later, no you won't, because you're throwing it on the side of the road, because when the wind hits it, it's gone. That's where some of this trash is coming from, uh, but most of it is coming from the restaurants. Now, we, I will tell you, Mr., I don't know a guy up here that's not passionate about this, and we are asking the public to do your part, so we won't have to do ours.
That's right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else, Mr. Kelly?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Ball?
No, sir.
Mr. Haley?
No, sir, I don't have any time.
Mr. Mem?
No, sir.
Mr. Parnell?
No, sir.
Mr. Williams?
Have one thing we discussed in the work session, uh, that I want to bring back up tonight, that's Sheriff's Department pay, basically, I'm looking to, for a resolution tonight to allow the deputies to bank comp time and sign the proper paperwork that will make it legal for them to do so. They did this years ago, and that's one of the requests I've had from them, is to bank comp time.
They've got a resolution, can we get a second for discussion, or, or second?
Second.
I got a motion, second, any discussion?
Yeah, there's some discussion, I, I don't think, is there such thing as comp time now?
There was a resolution done, uh, years ago about no, no longer being allowed, and I haven't had an opportunity to ask the examiner about it.
Yeah, we had a resolution, I think that's since we've been here.
You may want to ask that before you pass this resolution, because I, I don't, I think, if I remember right, it's against the law, according to Revenue Department, what he told me, I was doing it, and I got my hand slapped with it, I didn't have the paperwork that my employees had signed, now, I don't mind tabling this, if we want to let Attorney Bates look into it.
I'll ask that you table this, Mr. Commissioner.
Okay.
And tell them in the next meeting, if you.
I'll move we table this.
Can I?
Yes, sir. I would ask, Mr. Williams, you table it, and also, let's try to find out what, what is this gonna cost to us, is it in the sheriff's budget to do it, or? It won't cost us as much, comp time is, if they work overtime, that's time and a half, this will cost us time, they don't get, they don't get time and a half.
But I think.
They work eight hours, it's not paid for twelve, it's paid for eight.
It still will cost the budget, it'll still cost extra in the budget, is what Mr. Randall is saying.
Not, well, not really, because they got it in the budget for the, whatever overtime they figure they're gonna work this year.
Right.
It'll save us, it'll save us money longer.
So that's, so Mr. Williams has tabled this, and ask Mr. Roger.
What time do you think about that?
Uh, we need to vote to table it, can I get a second, we table it?
Did a motion?
A motion, he can give a motion that we table it?
Yeah, Randall, second.
Can I get a motion that we, uh?
Randall, second.
I did, I seconded, yeah.
So we got a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, I'm sorry, further discussion? Allow our attorney to check in on this, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I just want, make sure it's legal for it to be, if it's legal, I don't have a problem.
Can I get a motion, we adjourn?
Second.
Hey, one more thing, guys, our next meeting is December the fourteenth, the two thousand, of this month, next month, that'll be the only meeting for December, so make sure you put that on your calendar.